I can't see it being done on a residential street. It is residential, somebody lives there. There's a big condo complex right across the way and there's an apartment complex right off of Main Street, right there. Yeah, we could, you know, we could bring this thing down to a real small size scale and cut the hours down and all that, but that's not the point. This isn't how we should start. We should find some public, we should find some private space to do this. It'd be nice if we had something. Nothing comes to mind other than stuff that's already, places that have already been so noted, like Mitchell's parking lot or with a lumberyard parking lot for that weekend or other places, maybe even in the condo complex in the middle of their green. I just can't see it being put down on a street. I am in favor of reviewing this as a board of selectmen and seeing if there's ways that we can open up fundraising and social opportunities for smaller events when appropriate. So I'll start the discussion there.
Anybody else like to jump in?
Well, all right, I'll jump in. I too, I think this is a wonderful idea for downtown, but I am hesitant, not only the starting with something like this at one fell swoop, but the fact that there are other, one could leave the Oyster Fest and then go patronize a number of other establishments in town. I hate to say no, but I'm not sure this is where, like Mark, this is where we start. And I think it is certainly worth revisiting the authorization or the Board of Selectmen's stance on serving alcoholic beverages on town property. I can understand the frustration of people at Smith Harris who could do significant additional business with their facility in terms of weddings and things, but the inability to serve alcohol stops people from considering that. But I have concerns about this as a first event.
There's not been any new information presented that would change my mind. I'm opposed to this. I see if we pass this that there would be no way to deny others the right to do this. And I think we need to be very careful, so I'm not in favor of this.
Mr. Wilson?
Having read all of this, the only thing that... I was prepared to move on with this and say, let's give it a shot and see where we could go. The letter from George Mitchell, I think we made it pretty clear that the committee should go and speak to the surrounding property owners and see if there was a way to get something done. What he's saying here is that no one ever, I don't know if they did or they didn't. I know there's some folks here tonight that could maybe make that. But the property owners that pay taxes all year round and actually have liquor licenses and do all the things that this two-day event will do have legitimate gripes that, you know, they're doing it all year long and two days are going to be taken away from them or their lots are going to be full with people that aren't coming to their businesses. So I do understand their issues with that. I think Mr. Budz does a great job with putting together the idea of what it would need to do it and the liability insurance part of it that we would need to put, you know, to put out as a town to allow someone to do it. Having said all that, it at this point doesn't seem like we've got it together enough to do this. I'm kind of saddened by it only in the fact that I think this is, this is one of the things that we've got to find a way to get done and grow the event kind of things downtown that... And it's not, not about a beer fest, it's not about, I don't really call it a beer fest. I think it's pretty controlled to be, to the point of nauseam controlled, quite honestly. That's not, that's not the point, it's just, it's the bigger scope of what we, and I made this a big point the last time, it affects so many other things that would be, that would come before us on so many other town properties. And that's too bad, but great idea and I'm at a loss for being able to tell you how we could, how we could make this better in the timeframe that they need to get it done.
And I think going back to Mark's point, if you look at local events that have taken place, the Taste of Mystic, that was on private property, they've since moved it again to, I guess Mystic Village, which is again private property. I would have no problem if that were the case here, but you're asking for use of our town public property, so.
Yeah, and you're very right, Holly. I did read that and that's, that's the first thing that popped out at me that they weren't able to get any, to get it done in Stonington either. And they had to move it to the village, which totally is a total change in venue out of, out of the water, out of the whole Mystic, you know, the whole sailing thing, so totally different deal and, but that's what they had to do to get it done too, so. That's it.
I will say that this generated a lot of public interest, so somebody's watching our programs anyway, but a number of people who contacted me were downtown residents who were not in favor of this. A number of other people who were more from the northern part of town thought it was a good idea, so I guess it depends on where you live and how it's going to affect you.
Sure.
I'd say there's mixed feelings.
You know, I share all of these concerns and I tried to whittle it down to what the purpose of this event started out to be, and that is to promote the fan favorite town in other ways and take advantage of the opportunities that we have to capitalize on tourism and through the Niantic Main Street Organization, which is a long history of doing that, and members of liquor establishments, for lack of a better word, they were able to come up with a sponsor, in this case Guinness, who was willing to pony up some dough and help Niantic Main Street raise some money and bring some people here. I think that we're going to, I'm going to suggest something that's somewhere in the middle of where we were, that I, one, I'd like to establish a committee made up of somebody from Niantic Main Street, somebody from the Elbow East Line Business Organization, a couple of members of the restaurant family in the town who would have some good input on this, and some of the town staff to talk about what would happen should we allow these things in the future, perhaps on a one-day event, maybe the two-day event was a little bit too strong, maybe just a one afternoon event, see how it goes. And then what happens at Smith Harris for the champagne toast that we had to deny that one time. Maybe we would find a way to allow those types of uses. So how do we accomplish what Niantic Main Street was interested in accomplishing, and that is bringing recognition to our great and growing downtown? I would suggest perhaps going back to Guinness and saying, let's expand this opportunity to something similar to what we did in the Restaurant Week, where all of the restaurants in the town participated in Restaurant Weeks. I know that up in Flanders in the middle of January, we saw a bump in business as a result of the efforts from Niantic Main Street during Restaurant Week. So perhaps we could all get together, if we want to have a theme of Guinness and oysters, we can all get together and perhaps ask Guinness for providing discounted kegs of Guinness to all of the restaurants and then any of the excess dollars is donated whenever it's sold or beer is sold to the Niantic Main Street Organization so that they can use for marketing purposes. Now, there are a lot of folks, Family Pizza and Cafe Soul and perhaps Illyanos that may not have oysters on the menu, but an oyster pizza or something may be appropriate for that particular event or that particular weekend, and we can all do it. Certainly for some seafood markets and restaurants, the Oyster Festival has some appeal. I say that as a joke because everyone knows I have that restaurant, but, you know, I don't know how you can kind of move that around through the community and perhaps start this year in that September weekend by generating activity amongst all of the places. We have, I count two, four, six restaurants in the downtown area and, you know, kind of two halfway up, one in the eastern side, and then a few up in Flanders, so you probably have ten or twelve restaurants that we could, you know, we could satisfy, I think, the intent and that we all market together, we all work together, we all get people to come downtown. Perhaps there can be other events in, on Methodist Street that wouldn't involve drinking, but it would involve something to do with the festival. And then in the meantime, it would give us some time to really vet out the liability requirements and, you know, the unintended consequences that always occur when these things happen. I did include in your packets the agreements for Rocky Neck State Park and Harkness Park where they allow alcohol, and there's a number of provisions that they, that they have, they have determined that must be in place for anybody to rent, put a wedding in the, you know, in the castle there, whatever you want to call it.
Pavilion. Pavilion, I think.
Pavilion, yeah. And, you know, so there are things that certainly we could adopt if we decided to do that and move this down the road, but apply it to all of the other facilities that the town owns. So, you know, I think that's, that'll get us there, won't get you what you want, but it might get us what we need and it might keep Guinness interested enough to go for another year. So I don't know if anybody interested in pursuing with that, that committee idea and going forward and then checking out. I would like one or two members of the Board of Selectmen, maybe somebody from the Park and Rec Association to kind of get on this committee along with, I always appoint Gary to these things, you know, because he's just, it's become a joke now, he always gets appointed to everything, so I would just appoint him anyway just for that, you know, but.
You don't want to feel left out.
No, but he does, he does a great job. So, I mean, just get an idea so that we can talk about how we best move this forward and solve everybody's problem and minimize the impact on residents and neighbors, the liability, not only on the town, but, you know, somebody has a couple of Guinesses and then walks into another restaurant and then walks out, you know, the liabilities tend to multiply. So this way, each of the restaurants who, and I'm sure we all have serve safe and tip certified staff, that we can, we can promote that. I'd be willing to work with Niantic Main Street on something like that. So, I mean, I don't know how that goes. I'll ask your question, if you think we can go forward with that, would you be willing to participate on that kind of committee? I know it's probably disappointing to, to what you wanted to hear, but, you know, I think it doesn't, I think it doesn't shut us down. I think it gives us an opportunity to do something this year and then work to have something in place, so.
I think it's very creative. It can grow. So I, it's a great, it's a great compromise. If Main Street is interested, I'd certainly be happy to serve.
I'd be happy to serve as well.
Ex-officio on Parks and Rec, I can see them getting involved, like you said, so, yeah, that's, seems like a great compromise.
We have Main Street, we have Elbow, which is East Line Business Organization. Are there any others? I mean, are there any others that I'm forgetting, any organizations that may want to involve in this?
It depends how big you want to cap. I mean, you could do Rotary and Lions. It just depends how many people you want involved.
Maybe not initially.
Some of the volunteer organizations who may be interested in doing that. And one of the things you brought up is what, what happens on Celebrate East Line, you know? Some, you know, we've always not allowed beer there because it just has a tendency to get away from it. Okay, so what? Is there support for that idea?
If they support it, yes.
Madam, yes.
If we have the event on private property, will we have town support?
The question was if the event was held on private property, would there be town support? I mean, I don't know.
For me, there would be.
I don't think we could stop that.
But you know what, Sue?
You should come up to the microphone just so all those viewers at home.
We've put a lot of work into this, Niantic Main Street and Leo from the Black Sheep and Guinness and other people, so we've already done a lot of work on this. We thought we were going to get approval from the town, so if we were to have the event on private property, would we have the support of the town? Because we'd like to move forward with the event.
So the question is, I don't know whether the town has the ability to support or not support items that occur on a public property unless it poses a risk to public safety.
Well, we would like to have your support and also you'd have to sign, there is a permitting process.
Well, there are provisions in the zoning regulations for liquor permits.
Right, right.
For private property, for.
And we'd have to hire the police, but the selectmen does have to sign the permit.
Well, and it's a different animal than, than what we're talking about.
Totally different.
We have always, I think, looked at those on a case-by-case basis and, you know, I think what you heard the concern.
If you would say, if you, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think what you heard the concern was, you know, what are the effects on the residents and town people and liability and how do we manage that?
Right, and we've talked about that and I do agree that there are some things that do exist now that allows that on town property, and I do, we do believe there should be rules and regulations and insurance, which we were prepared to have. But without that, you know, we've already put a lot of work into this and we would like to find a private piece of property to have the event.
Well, I tell you, two, two things come to mind. One, I don't know that any of us up here can say we would or wouldn't without knowing the details.
Right.
On the private property. And two, you know that there's been a long history of the town supporting Niantic Main Street and whatever they do. But secondly, the, the opportunity exists to get this committee, this doesn't have to be a five-year committee. I mean, this can be a five-week committee, so you still might be able to come back with an opportunity to do something.
Right, but, but time, as we know, I mean, it's already, it's April, it's September, and, and, yeah, I think it's a great idea, but if we find a private spot, yeah, time, there's a, there's going to be a lot of work involved in it, that's all we're saying.
I think that the First Selectman is right. You find your private property, you come back to us, and if the Board of Selectmen feels that it fits the criteria, but we can't say at this point without knowing what the plan is.
Safety, police issues, the baking issues, the quiet, the shutdown, what time at night?
Right.
Wristbands, all that stuff, which you'll cover. I know you will. But so it's a question of where, where is it going to be?
And yes, if it could get done within five weeks, but realistically, it's tough.
The Board of Selectmen may grant a special permit for the consumption of alcohol to any nonprofit organization on the following terms. Demonstrate there'll be no disorderly assembly, disturbing noise, traffic and interference with peace and safety. Such organization may require to show evidence of financial responsibility and insurance, post a sufficient bond and indemnify the town or any expenses resulting. The grant shall be subject to compliance with the provisions of the Connecticut General statutes relating alcoholic liquor, and such permit may be revoked at, you know, at any time when in the opinion of the Board of Selectmen's agents have been violated, and it says a fine for any person doing it.
Right.
To me, those criteria.
Exist.
Offer a lot of room for us to say no, should you come in and satisfy those criteria on a private property, but it does not say town property. It says on any property owned by the town, except that at McCook Park, the beach and alcohol may be consumed in accordance with the ordinance under the jurisdiction of the Park and Rec Commission. So, so anyway, I think this is what we need to tighten up, but if you had it on private property, I think we most likely would look pretty nicely about it.
I think you could absolutely positively fulfill all the things you need to do if you could get that part of it done.
Right.
And I, but I don't, what I, I think we should do is go ahead with the committee.
Oh, no, absolutely.
In the same vein, and try to get this put together so that we could maybe put, put it to bed for next year.
Because it doesn't just affect Niantic Main Street, it affects the Historical Society and every other nonprofits, so yes, I do believe that we need to have that committee.
So we should go, we should go ahead with that.
Right.
And, and then move in both parts, and you know what? You put on a great festival, wherever it shall be, in whatever size it takes, and we come back next year and we're all happy as hell and everybody thinks it's the right thing to do and we made some, we made some headway, so. I, Sue, the last thing we want to do is stop people that want to do the right thing and you're doing the right things.
No, I understand that.
It's just sucks that we end up where we're at.
I'm trying to find a way not to say no.
Right.
And, and so the only thing I would ask you, if you have a representative to Niantic Main Street and they want to be on here, I see Mr. Walsh is not here, so we could volunteer him while he's not here, that may work.
No, unfortunately, yeah. We will, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday, so we'll find someone. Probably John Swizer, he's the nicest one.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that? We'll move that forward? Okay, thank you. Okay, golf carts.
Golf carts.
You have that letter that was referred to by the Board of Governors Chairman?
Yep.
That I think is in your packet.
Correct.
How do you want to proceed on golf carts?
I'm not starting this time. Just saying.
Ms. Hardy, do you want to, any thoughts?
Our job as the Board of Selectmen is to pass ordinances, ordinances that provide rules for the entire town, not just special groups. This requires an ordinance, it requires a legal, legal notice in the paper, costly. Plus, as someone had suggested, perhaps we do a beach community at a time. Every time that ordinance is amended, it must be published in the paper. So I'm still, in spite of Ms. Cheney's passionate remarks, I'm still uncomfortable with approving for one beach only, either we approve for all or none. There are senior citizens in many communities in different parts of the town who I'm sure would find it convenient to also use golf carts. They are not street legal, and I understand that many people have been using them illegally in spite of the lack of an ordinance permitting them, including one of the previous presenters. I also have learned that particularly in Saunders Point, there are teenagers that drive the carts recklessly, again illegally, but I, I have not heard any additional information that would persuade me to change my previous opinion. I am not in support of this at this time.
Ms. Chusman?
I, as Ms. Hardy feels, I would not approve this for just one beach. If we were to approve it, it should be for all the beaches.
Mr. Wilson?
I support this because I think that this beach community has come out in support of it and has done the due diligence to make it their job to take care of their beach. And why would we ask of them to worry about other communities that did not care to do this, whether they're driving golf carts around illegally or not? Quite frankly, I give them kudos for coming out and asking the permission to do it. And that's the whole idea of this. I believe it will alleviate a bunch of parking issues. It will give those folks on the top end the sunrise and sunset, the ability to come down those hills within reasonable, without driving cars. I just spent a week or two ago in Naples, Florida, in a community that, that has, it's not, it's not, it's not over fifty-five or anything like that, but they all have golf carts. Everybody. People thirty years old, they got golf carts. They drive to the community center, they drive to the community pool, they drive to the tennis court, they drive, I, I, I found it fascinating. I went and asked all these people, I, and they said, what are you talking about? It's like non, it's not even an issue. And I, I find it hard to believe that we're finding this so hard to deal with, that we can't find a way to get over the fact that it's an electric car, which everyone and their brother wants to buy one, they can't get them because they cost way too much money and there aren't enough of them. But you could get an electric golf cart and drive all over the beach all summer long and not spend any gas. It's beyond me, and I just don't know why we're penalizing a, a community that, number one, has their own, they own the road, they have their own bylaws on their roads, they have their own everything, they are entity on their own. All we need to do is say, listen, you got to abide by the laws of the state of Connecticut and whatever else we want to put on them. And quite frankly, I think if we did all of that, we need to start with one and see how it goes and make some sense out of it, and then hold everybody else accountable that is doing it on their own and as you, as everyone on the other end of the table said, they're doing it anyway. So these are the folks that are asking for permission. Thank you.
I agree with a lot of what Mr. Wilson said. He took the initiative to come out here and put an application in front of us or a proposal. We have to vote on it based on its merits. This might create an avalanche of applications or we take the rest of them as a lump, but you're, you're coming here asking. Your Board of Directors, we've been, testimony anyway, was that unanimously, was the word, voted to approve, phone vote, not in a meeting, I understand the difference. Ms. Cheney said, you know, different neighborhoods have different characteristics and I'm not sure if we should necessarily vote all nine beach communities' approval necessarily. The qualities that are in Florida typically are flat, flat terrain, very wide streets and even communities that are built with golf carts in mind. I dare say the Nahantuck Indians didn't have anything in mind like that when they, when that was established out there and, and houses were put up in what we have out there now. So, so, yeah, there are some, some difficult hills and corners in every neighborhood, but you came, you came before us. I, I, I heard your passion plea, your Board of Governors who represents, I would hope, your, your community and polls and is the, is the pulse of your, of your community, says they want them, who are we to say no? There is a liability issue for this town. I think there are a few streets in town that, that the golf carts don't belong on, and maybe, maybe we post no golf cart signs on those if we, if we have that problem, but I don't think it's necessarily in your community either. So where I'm in, where I'm at right now, before I listen to the First Selectman, if he persuades me otherwise, I'm, I'm apt to vote in favor of this application.
May I just ask for a two-minute recess so I can get my book off of the desk without you already?
Sure, sure. We went to commercial.
QVC?
QVC.
We're going to lose all our viewers.
Show them the knife, the nice knife.
The Ginsu knife?
The Ginsu.
They're going to flip the channel and never come back. I didn't get a Red Sox score. We could announce that.
We could announce that. I could do the play-by-play.
I could do the Jerry Remy.